Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is June the 29th, 2020. It is 6:30 and we're at the base center located here in Fort Ringo. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. I'm gonna do roll call. Mr. Ramirez.
President.
Mr. Garcia.
Close the door, Mr..
Mr. Castillo. Dr. B. Mrs. Lopez. Mrs. Lopez. Mrs. Lopez.
Yeah.
Uh, Dr. B. We cannot hear Dr. B.
Hi, guys.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Garcia.
President, and Mr. President, if I could just say a couple of words, uh, you know, I, I, uh, I just wanna let everybody know, I got, I was reinstated today. I have not received a copy of the agenda or spoke to our superintendent about today's agenda or any other board member about today's agenda. So if it, if it could be read, the items, because I really am not too familiar with what's, uh, what's on the items are, are scheduled for today. And I'm glad to be back, you know, I, you know, I'm just here to, you know, do what's best for our students and hopefully provide some stability within our board and hopefully I can assist with, uh, you know, improving the dynamics of this board. Thank you.
Welcome back, Mr. Garcia. And myself, Elazar Velazquez, present as well. We do, uh, we do have a quorum. Uh, Mr. Ramirez, will you help us with a pledge of allegiance?
Would you? A pledge of allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Section 3, information and proposals from superintendent and staff.
Mr. Superintendent, Board, as part of the superintendent's report, we would like to provide information to the board members on reopening our campuses. Ms. Morris will be giving us a presentation.
Basically, what I'm gonna provide is a one sheet, uh, it's like a summary of some of the TA recommendations and then some of the things that we're proposing. And the reason that we wanna share the information with you because TA is giving the information quite rapidly and then from one minute to the next, the information is changing. So what we wanna give you is what the recommendations are that TA is proposing, then some of the things that we wanna have in place, but of course, all of this is tentative, whether it be virtual or live instruction, all of it is still basically not set in stone. But TA did provide some information for us last week and that information was two forms or two models of virtual instruction. One that we call synchronous and the other one that we call asynchronous. Synchronous means that the instruction is live, as the teacher is giving the instruction, the student is engaging in instruction as well. Asynchronous is a combination of synchronous, meaning that there's live instruction, but the asynchronous is like a blended model, very similar to what we had in place. What TA has provided as far as guidelines for funding is they have told us that high school students, middle school students, and elementary students in third, fourth, and fifth grade will have to log on to either asynchronous or synchronous. Elementary students are required to have 180 minutes per day. This is for students that are in third, fourth, and fifth grade. And then middle school and high school students are required to have 240 minutes per day. Those are the TA recommendations and of course, these recommendations are only for virtual instruction. For pre-K to second grade, they have not given us a minimum amount of minutes, but they have told us, if you look at the second column at the bottom, pre-K through second grade can only be asynchronous model. There's no other form of instruction that we can give unless the student chooses to come in live. If they are in pre-K, first, second, then that child will, would choose either live instruction, if that's available, or asynchronous, which is that every student needs to log on, but they don't necessarily need to do it live in kinder, in pre-kinder, kinder, first and second. That is not the case for elementary, middle school, and high school. We have two, two different choices there, but with elementary, we only have the asynchronous model. Uh, if you look at the ratio, of course, these are just ratios that we have come up with. They are not set in stone, like I said, because we have not received any information from TA with regards to live instruction. These are just numbers that we had put together based on CDC recommendation prior to what TA released, so they have not given us any actual guidelines for live instruction. If the stu, the child chooses to do virtual, which if you look at the second column, we had 50 to 60% of our parents surveyed back that they wanna do remote instruction, meaning that they wanna keep their children home. And then we had 20 to 25% that want to do face-to-face instruction. Our goal, of course, is to try to get our special populations to attend school. If you look at the minutes that we're proposing compared to the TA recommendations, you might ask, well, why are you recommending more minutes than what the TA is required? We went ahead and we put two scenarios. Uh, if you look at the high school, we would have 30-minute periods. And then the middle school would have 35-minute periods and elementaries would have 45-minute periods. If you look at the high school, we did two different scenarios where we go 40 minutes because if we do have live instruction and we have asynchronous, that means students would have to change from class to class and period to period because when you get to high school, it's very difficult to keep students in one room the whole time because they have different things on their schedule. Some, of course, are career and technology courses that may require that the student go to a different part of the building. Uh, in middle school, it would be a lot easier to keep kids in one isolated room and the teacher would rotate. The same case would be for elementary. And you may say, why are we extending the periods or why are we, um, addressing more minutes in middle school? Based on our information and based on what we receive from TA, TA is not going to do away with the accountability, meaning that they are gonna proceed with star testing. This was as of a week and a half ago. I don't know, that might change, you know, as we get through the summer, but they have told us that the accountability will continue, we will be rated, we will get a, a rating for our campuses, uh, and our students will test whether it be live or whether it be online. So with that in mind, we know that we have some issues because last year, we did have uh, some of our elementary, of some of our middle schools and one elementary school that were in need of improvement. So that label that we had last year, it will continue, meaning that if we were requiring improvement last year, everything that we did last year basically didn't happen and we start again with a blank slate. So it would be something that we would need to address again in our middle schools and those are the, the schools with the greatest need because in our middle schools, we did have, uh, quite a few, uh, of the middle schools that needed to show improvement. And then, like I said, that one elementary school. So these are just proposals. As TA provides more guidelines and more information to us, we will be relaying that information to you all as rapidly as it's changing. Are there any questions about either the TA guidelines or some of the things that we're proposing?
Let me, virtual, how many minutes do they have to do in virtual for elementary?
For elementary, they're depending, if it's third, fourth, and fifth, it's 120 minutes a day.
So basically, it's like four classes, correct?
Right, like we could go half-day if they're virtual, we could just give instruction in the morning and those kids in third, fourth, and fifth would be done. The little kids, there is no minimum minute, meaning that if they're in pre-K, kinder, first, those children, as long as they log on every day, they would either have to show a thumbs up, complete an activity, uh, but the, what's different between what we did in the spring and what we're doing now is TA is making sure that we don't lose count of our kids, that we don't stop contacting them on a daily basis. If we wanna count the ADA, we have to touch base with every kid, whether it be synchronous or asynchronous on a daily basis. So that's different than what we had in place in the spring. It's a little bit stricter.
So if they come to an elementary, how, how, how long, how many minutes do we have to give?
It could be the same thing, 120 minutes. There is no guideline. What we put here for elementary is that we would do a full day because more than likely, our students that are gonna be sent to school, it's gonna be because a parent needs to work. I know myself personally, I have elementary children and I chose to send my kids and the reason is because I'd have to work, so I'd send my children. And it's the same thing, we have people that work in the healthcare industry, that work in the, in the business industry who have expressed that that is, it's not so much that they want to, it's that it's a necessity for some, for some parents at this point. That may change if, you know, things continue to progress the way they do. But the majority of, of our parents that are sending our children back to school, it's because they're working parents. So we're saying that those kids would have the option to stay till 3 o'clock.
So my question is, let's say you have a teacher, let's call her Teacher A or Teacher B, doesn't matter. So let's say he did virtual learning for four hours, but he also has to do instruction the whole day. How do you handle, do you understand what I'm trying, in other words, how do you handle doing virtual and going and teaching classes at the same time?
The reason that they, TA proposed synchronous and asynchronous, where we would have trouble would be in kinder, first, second, because there's only one mode. But in third through 12th grade, there's something called synchronous, meaning while the teacher is teaching, the student is logging in. And that model is more favorable to us because right now, based on our study, we show 60% of our kids wanting to stay home. So if we decide to go asynchronous in the third through 12, you're giving the teacher twice as much work. So we have to keep that in mind. Some people say, well, that means that the kid's gonna have to log on. Well, yes, because otherwise, the teacher would be having to deliver two modes of instruction in third through 12, and those are the grades that count for us. So for us, for accountability, my recommendation, like I told Ms. Carza, would be synchronous. That way, the kid is logging on, the teacher is teaching, they're giving assignments, they're grading, the teacher's teaching, they're giving assignments, they're grading. Otherwise, you would have a teacher trying to deliver two different modes of instruction for the kids, three through 12. And I think that the reason that state did it that way is because those are the accountability grade levels. Those are the ones that have to take the star exam. So they wanna make sure that we're teaching, the kids are logged on at home at the same time, not, oh, you know what, I'll log on tonight when I decide, you know, to get up or I decide to stop playing the Nintendo or the games. It would have to be done. The teacher's teaching in the classroom and the child is logged on. So they're teaching the ones that chose to come, plus the ones that chose to stay at home at the same time.
So let me ask another question. So now, let's say we're trying to do both at the same time. Don't you think, or Ms. Carza, don't you think we need better video equipment? If we're gonna get the, the little camera from that computer, I don't think that that little camera from that little computer is gonna do justice to the teacher going to the blackboard. So I'm asking, don't, don't we need some kind of cameras with sound systems to be able for them to pick up? Shouldn't, now, if we're gonna do that type of, of learning, shouldn't we prepare classrooms with cameras and microphones or things of that nature?
We have a, we have some requisitions, um, been before the board, uh, over, I'm sorry. We have requisitions, or 5,000, that we're proposing, some Apple TVs that would facilitate the visualization of the instructions so that children can actually see it from a broader, um, screen to be able to facilitate that. And also, the, the laptops that we're also requesting permission to purchase will have the proper camera so that everyone can, can view it. I know Ms. Gonzalez is on the, um, on the screen and they did have a very successful program this summer and everyone did virtual learning. Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, ma'am. We just finished our 2019, 2020 summer program and it was 100% virtual. Um, we had great participation in every campus. We had enough hardware or devices to send home for the summer. Of course, we're only talking about 400 kids compared to 10,366, but we're prepared to present, uh, some purchases for hardware for the upcoming school year so that every student can go home with a laptop computer. Uh, but it was successful, sir. The teachers received a brand-new laptop as well this, this year. So all the equipment that was being used this summer was virtually brand-new and the cameras on the laptops, uh, were very successful. We also bought them some, um, uh, document cameras so that they could model, uh, while they were at home, on, on the screen, they could model, uh, whatever they couldn't do on the screen, uh, or on the blackboard, they could do it, uh, right in front of them in their camera. So it was really, really successful. We have great feedback from all the, not only the teachers, the supervisors, but parents and students also commented on how easy it was to log on, to follow instructions, to complete assignments, and to get feedback. So we, we had a wonderfully successful program.
So you think the cameras from a, from a laptop are sufficient to, uh, basically hear the, the, uh, the, uh, in other words, what I'm trying, we have microphones, we have everything, so if you have a laptop there with a camera and the teacher's teaching on the blackboard, is it, is it gonna work?
Oh, instead of the teacher, uh, showing them on a blackboard, that's why we got them the document cameras so that they can actually show what they're writing on. Uh, as they go on, it's, it's projected on the screen, so it, it's gonna be very close-up. They don't need, they don't need to go to the chalkboard at all. All, all they have to do is put it on their tablets, on their, on, on their desk, and they will project exactly what's on that sheet right onto the screen. So it's even a better, uh, close-up of what the teacher is trying to, uh, or how to give instruction. So it's really, really awesome. Uh, and we can model something like that for you all, uh, in, at next meeting so that you can see how easy it is and how visually accepting it is to the kids.
So, so are we gonna have a big screen for the kids that are gonna be in classroom so they can see what, what they're teaching? In other words, if I have a, put a sheet here, right, and I'm teaching you how to multiply or whatever, then the virtual people are seeing it. Now, the people that are in the classroom, are we gonna put a big screen for them so they can see what's actually happening?
Yes, sir. Whatever they're writing on it is projected for the ones in the classroom, is projected on the big screen. But for the ones online, they're looking at the actual tablet where the teacher is writing. So both get an opportunity to see it close-up.
So we have enough projector for the whole district?
Uh, we do. We do, we actually do, uh, but we're purchasing some more in case we have teachers who have to teach from home. We don't know what the scenario is going to be like come August, so we have some, uh, portable ones that we ordered this year and then we have the ones that are in every classroom. Every classroom has their, um, document cameras, so, but if we need to purchase anymore, well, we will.
I have a question. Uh, it's pleasant to hear that the summer session was so successful. Do we have any data from, um, compliance from our students in the springtime, especially when you say that they're still gonna hold us accountable? We wanna make sure, of course, that we're not leaving anybody behind and that we are closing those gaps. So have we utilized any data from compliance with our district from the springtime when everybody was required to basically learn virtually and implemented that into our plan going forward?
Unfortunately, during the springtime, we had a lot of, uh, it wasn't a full-blown virtual scenario because it was brand-new. Uh, we had a lot of packets going home, so feedback was a little sketchy. Um, this summer, we were able to gather some data and I know that beginning the school year, uh, in August, Ms. Carza has a plan to give a beginning-of-the-year assessment across the board in the elementaries and middle schools and high schools to see where we're starting off, our, our, um, our jumping point at that moment, uh, so that we can move forward. But, um, unfortunately, we don't have, um, other than our benchmarks that we took towards the beginning of spring or the beginning of this school year, we have benchmark data prior to COVID, but at the end of the year, we were not able to close out and get an assessment, unfortunately. But, uh, we're prepared to start in August and get us at least a, a jumping board to see where we're at.
I have a, a question. I know, we talked about the cameras, microphones, laptops. How are y'all handling for people that don't have an internet provider?
Um, in the spring, we had that issue and what we did is we, um, we got some hotspots and we were able to lend those out, uh, through AT&amp;T. Um, and now, here's, here's the caveat, um, there are some areas, um, in north of La Victoria, the newer parts across the, uh, Gruya High School, the northern part.
Yeah, that's why I'm like, because my house don't have an internet provider.
No, and right now, the governor and of course, Mike Morath from TA are coming up with some type of Texas Connect, which is going to, uh, bring businesses like Spectrum, AT&amp;T, and others who provide internet to widen the, the connectivity. Unfortunately, we don't have it right now, but Ms. Carza, uh, and the rest of the admin have been talking about possibly putting some hotspots on buses and getting them as close to where we can catch a signal. Uh, that way, we can shoot it out and get, get every, every household a, um, hotspot. So they run about $45 for three months, so we're prepared to start in August and get everybody who needs. We kinda know who's, how many families we're talking about and we're talking at about 150, uh, kids. It's less families, obviously, because there's bunches of kids in one group, in one family. But we're prepared, we're prepared to, uh, give them their hotspots and we are also prepared to put a, um, a location in different areas so that if parents have to come in to that location in a smaller setting, um, if they have no connectivity whatsoever, and we're gonna find that. Um, so we're prepared, the scenarios are there.
And if some, uh...
Sorry?
If somebody needed a hotspot, if somebody needs a hotspot, who do they, is, is it services or who do they go to?
The chain of command usually is, if the family reaches out to the principal, the campus lets them know that they don't have, then the campus reaches out to me, we order the hotspots and it, it gets done immediately.
Okay, okay.
Now, Mr. Garcia, we also contacted Mr. Delano, uh, during the spring to help us with some of those remote areas that Spectrum and AT&amp;T could not reach those neighborhoods and we were successful with a lot of those, uh, families that, uh, reached out and said that they did not have, uh, connectivity. Now, we also provided, uh, surveys before we left for, uh, spring break, knowing that this was coming and, uh, we got ahold of those families through those surveys. Now, these surveys that we just sent out, um, about a month ago, uh, whether or not they were gonna send their children to school, we asked them questions about whether or not they had internet access. And 80% of those, uh, students' parents, families said they did have connectivity, um, and they did have devices. We wanna make sure that every child has a device in front of them, uh, because every single child is in a different grade level and we're all going to be connecting, uh, based on their daily schedule. So, um, we pretty much have a good idea as to, uh, the amount of connectivity we have in our community and also the number of devices that we still need to purchase to ensure that all our students have a device.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, one of the questions that, uh, uh, people around town or in our community keep asking is that, uh, since we're only expecting 40%, right, Mrs. Morris? 40% of the students, are we expecting to open every single campus across the, uh, the district?
Yes. Yes, TA has, if you have 10% or 15%, at this point, that's the guidance that they've given us, that we need to open our schools. Now, that may change with the increased number of COVID cases that are coming out in the community and across the state, that could change at any minute. But as of our last meeting with the commissioner and Ms. Carza, that was the, that we would open our schools for in-person instruction, then provide remote instruction to those at home. And then we would also have to provide, I think, lunch as well, right, Ms. Carza? And even if 60% of our students are staying home, our teachers will be in their classrooms, delivering virtual instruction.
Last question I have, uh, you, you said something about those schools that needed improvement or didn't show improvement. Do those tags carry on to this school year?
Unfortunately, yes, all the, the tags that we had last year. I know that I spoke to Mr. Gonzalez earlier this morning and he's like, we have work, because they gave us some work that we have to do and it's due in July, but it's not work based on data, it's work that's based, reflective work. That means that we have to go back and look at the COVID period and reflect on how we think our students might have regressed because more than likely, they may have regressed because whatever work we did up to March was great, but then we just like, you know, and we know that we already had a struggling campus, so everything unfortunately carries over. And that was one of the things that the commissioner did stress was that, you know, accountability would be 100% again. You know, I find that very difficult, being that we're not gonna have the in-person and it was difficult to show gains when we had the kids there every single day. So, you know, it does concern me and that was a conversation I had with Mr. Gonzalez this morning. I said, yes, sir, I am worried, I, I am concerned, you know, I think our work is gonna be, you know, tenfold now because now we have to make sure we reach out and that our kids are not only, you know, connecting and doing their work, but are they still showing progress? And then if they regress, how do we bring those kids back to where we left off in, in March?
So you think they're gonna use the accountability for this coming year?
That's what they told us.
They're gonna use a regular accountability.
That's what they told Ms. Carza and myself and we kinda looked at each other like, whoa, but yes, that's what they're saying, but that could change, like I said. You know, it sounds great, you know, when he was delivering, all the expectations are gonna be high and this is gonna be this and this is gonna be that, but, you know, in a, in an ideal situation, I think it would work, but we're not working in an ideal situation. And I know that I spoke to Representative Guian and the connectivity issue in our community is a big, it's a big concern. So I guess different people in the community are reaching out to the, to the, to the state legislature and saying, hey, you know what, the reality is, we've gotta connect our communities and we have many communities regardless of the hotspot. And Commissioner Morris did, uh, stress that there would be areas that we would not be able to reach in the rural area, so they're aware of that, but, you know, they're still proceeding forward with the accountability as of now. That could change.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
One quick question, and is the state, are there any additional federal fundings that's gonna assist us with connectivity or with, you know, getting over all of these , uh, new bound hurdles?
I know that the state is working, the state legislature is working with, uh, I know Spectrum and different, uh, providers to see if they can, you know, extend, but I think that one of the things that Representative Guian, uh, stressed to me is that it's not so much reaching out to these communities, they're having trouble supporting the people that have internet now because of the amount of people that are using the internet now and relying on the internet. So I know that there's issues with that, but as far as the school getting additional funding, uh, we have not been notified that we're getting additional federal funds for the school. I don't know if the state is giving money to our local community in any way, shape, or form, but I know to us, they're not giving us money for connectivity. What we do know is the federal government is working with, uh, the FCC, uh, which is the funding that we get for internet connection, um, and internet services, uh, within our school system. They are working in modifying and being a little flexible with also allowing school districts to purchase devices, uh, which will be at a rate of, um, we would probably buy it for 11% of the cost. Uh, we, right now, we pay 89, uh, the government pays 89 cents to a dollar and we pay, uh, 11 cents for internet connection, internet service, the infrastructures that we have in our school systems. So they are working with the service providers, uh, in making sure that the districts have the type of funding needed, uh, to be able to continue with virtual learning. And I believe Ms. Gonzalez may have some more information on that.
Yes, uh, recently, we got notified that we, uh, qualified for the CARES Act Easter grant, um, and that's an, uh, it's a service, uh, grant for connectivity devices, anything related to COVID. Uh, we are going to receive 4.4 million, 402,215 dollars. However, this money was reallocated from state funding, which kinda threw us a little off because, yes, it sounds wonderful when they told us, apply for this grant, you're gonna get all this money, but it turns out that they just took it from the state allotment and put it into a grant, which is not really going to help us because of those 4.4, we already have allocated 3.6 million dollars in salaries understate. So technically, we're left with pennies and there will be no way for us to use the Easter grant for that. However, it, you're gonna hear it, you're gonna say, we're, we gave a grant, uh, for, specifically for, for devices and anything having to do with COVID, but at the end of the day, uh, it was money that was already, um, earmarked and so there's, there's nothing there. However, with, um, last meeting with Henrik Wayar, they did say that they are going to have a, uh, connectivity grant, but that's gonna be for local municipalities so that they can not only, um, stretch out the connectivity, but to also help communities, uh, start up locations where kids could come in, um, like the libraries or other community centers where they could, instead of, if they live like past 7:55, they can come in, a bus can pick them up and they could come do their classwork at a, at a certain location. So they're gonna funnel it through the municipalities, but it's still money coming through. I just don't want you all to get discouraged about the 4.4 that we're getting. It's just, uh, unfortunately, money that... It's just unfortunate money that we already have earmarked, so we're, we won't able to use that.
So the grant was really not a grant, right?
No, no, and it was very disappointing, but...
They took money from Peter to give to Paul then, basically.
That's exactly what happened.
By the way, we're going to take it away and that's how we're going to give you all this money that we're giving you and you can forget about the grant.
And the worst, the worst part, sir, is that now we have to share with a private nonprofit. So since we have a private school in our vicinity, like ICS, in mechanical conception, they qualify for these Easter grants. So now we have to share our percentage based on their per pupil. We have to share money, so they're going to be given, out of our four point four million, they're going to be given forty thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. And it comes with a whole bunch of, I guess, compliance now because it's federal. When it used to be state, it was free, it came to us without any application. But that's just the way it worked out this way and, you know, but we will keep you abreast of every grant that comes out as soon as it comes out.
I have one last question, actually as the healthcare provider here. With all of these different types of ways we're going to be trying to bring our kids in and having staff in, can you let the community know a little bit about what's our plan to keep our, whoever our staff, who are going to be in attendance on campus and any children who will be electing to come into the campuses? How are we planning to make sure that we keep them safe?
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions?
Okay, I thought Ms. Gonzalez.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Dr. B, just to let the public know that the state is sending quantities...
We lost audio.
Oh, you lost audio? Okay, you want to go ahead, Ms. Gonzalez?
But going back to that, Dr. B, we are planning a, kind of like a town hall meeting that we had last time, just to let the, we've already met with all teachers, principals, admin, to devise our plan. We're ready to launch it too. But of course, I mean, come August or the end of July, anything can change. And so we're prepared either way, hybrid or one hundred percent virtual. And we're ready to present to the, to the parents. I know they're eager to know what's going on, but you're right.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Norris.
One, I just wanted to, like, a little bit to follow up to Dr. B's question is, what's, have, I don't know, and who's present there, but what's the plan with UIL athletics, mariachi, band, choir? Have we heard anything about that?
The latest, sir?
Yes, we have, but I think Ms. Garcia can answer that one.
The latest that we have is just...
We lost audio, probably.
I'm sorry.
Let me text her, let her know if we can't hear her.
Can you hear me? Mr. Garcia?
We lost them or they lost us?
We can't hear them.
Can you hear me now? No? Can you hear me?
I think they're looking for IT.
I think so. I know, Mr. Garcia, that with the band, they do not want any congregation of kids altogether, especially blowing out anything like that, any gyms where kids are all gathered. I mean, right now, they put a stop to everything. So the only guidance we have is that they're, they're asking them to hold band tryouts, any UIL activities via Zoom or any other type of way to communicate through online. Yeah, they had opened up the gyms and then something happened and they closed them, they closed it down again. So, yeah, I think we got a lot of negative feedback at TA about that, just like they did with the restaurants and all that wonderful stuff, yeah?
Yes.
Can you hear me, Mr. Garcia?
There he is.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
The UIL guidelines that were shared with us basically did allow students to come in for practice and for strengthening and conditioning with guidelines that required students to bring their own water, not to share the fountains, bring their own towels, make sure that they practice social distancing, that we worked with small groups, and of course, that we disinfect and have available for children sanitizing solutions and also make sure that we cleaned every time a group of kids were going to be coming in. They do have a plan already, we were going to be ready to start. I think it was June seventeenth, but because of the current situation in our community, in speaking to Dr. Vasquez, we agreed that it would be best if we would wait. And so we're still waiting. I did meet with the athletic director and the band director and we basically said we were going to wait this one more week. And then normally, they start practicing July first and it's all on a volunteer basis. And there were some group of students that wanted to come in. Again, they're all so concerned that they're falling behind. But nonetheless, they are still engaging in virtual practices. And so they're still, the students are still practicing virtually with the band. Spoke to Mr. Rodriguez and he's mentioning that they're still doing that. As far as conditioning and strengthening, we're going to wait and I'm going to touch base with Dr. Vasquez and see if we can move forward. But at the moment, it doesn't seem like it's the right time to do it.
Any more questions? Okay, item number one, consider and take possible action on last budget amendment number twenty twenty-five. Do we have a motion on item one?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve item one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen as presented on our board packet and we can ask questions. That's my motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, raise your right hand.
We have discussion, please.
Discussion?
Yeah, please. I just want to know a couple of things, ma'am, on, for example, on the five thousand dollar and over. I noticed we're buying a truck that's a two thousand and eleven truck for ten thousand dollars. How much mileage does it have? If we're going to spend ten thousand, why not spend twenty and get a new one? I just, that doesn't, I don't understand that one. If you can explain to me.
That was a recommendation that came from the maintenance department. I believe that that vehicle had been evaluating and they were recommending that that would be the most efficient way for the district to acquire a vehicle for that department.
Okay, how, I'm just saying, you're spending ten, in other words, we got a truck that's nine years old, almost ten years old. Yeah, and we're going to pay ten thousand dollars. I know that the school gets special pricing and I'm just saying, isn't it worth our while to go spend, you know, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four thousand, buy a new one that has, like, how many miles does this truck have? You have any idea?
No, sir, I don't.
I'm just saying, ten thousand for a ten-year-old vehicle, that seems like a lot of money.
What kind of vehicle is it, do you know? Maybe it's a diesel twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred, I don't know.
No, it's a Chevrolet Silverado.
That's what it says.
All I know is that the mechanic, the head mechanic actually went out there and looked at the truck and made that recommendation and I understand what you're saying, Mr. Villarreal. We can just, you know, I don't know at this point.
I'm just saying, if it has twenty-five thousand miles, it's a, you're getting a great deal. But if it has a hundred and seventy-five thousand miles, well, guess what, we're not getting a great deal.
And I don't have that information, so...
I don't know what you all want to do, but I'm just saying, in other words, would you pay ten thousand dollars for a ten-year-old truck? I know I wouldn't, I don't know about yourselves.
Well, like I said, we need to get details because maybe... It's a twenty-five, twenty-five hundred or...
No, that's a Silverado, Silverado's a fifteen hundred.
And the mileage too, I mean, the conditions of the vehicle. Maybe we can get more details on the vehicle.
Can we leave one that, one out and see what, and don't get me wrong, if it's got twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand, forty thousand, it's a great deal. But don't come back and say it's got two hundred thousand miles because then it's not a great deal, I think. The other questions I have, Mr. Morales, is this is just something I need to get off my chest a little bit. I know in a meeting on the eleventh of this month, I got something on a board packet that you went and requested from a Lionel Lopez from TA, a, something that if we didn't make a budget or things of that nature. What was that about, could I ask, ma'am? We got a whole list of all these bad things that were going to happen if we didn't get a budget, but...
Ms. Villarreal?
Never, never have we gotten that ever in our life.
Is this an item on the agenda?
Yeah, it's on the budget, it's about the budget, exactly.
Mr. Montalvo?
It's on the budget, it's about the budget. No, it's, we were, we were, basically, an attorney went out there, they got an opinion that if we didn't get a budget and we're discussing approving the budget, that all these bad things are happening. I just want to know why we sent that, for that letter.
Mr. Villarreal, I'll answer that question. Basically, when we did not have a quorum, when we presented the item, the tax rate, I for myself did not know what would happen. So I asked Ms. Diana Rolles to please call TA to provide a guidance as to what would happen if we did not have our budget approved. And so that is when they sent us that recommend, I mean, that email giving us all the information that would happen if we did not approve a budget. But it was just for our own edification.
Because we had notified, I notified you that I had court that day and I was more than willing to go in the afternoon. And I think the rest of them, there was never a plan not to show up. So it just, when you, when you read that letter, it just, this is what's happening, I don't know. Anyway, I got that off my chest, so.
Mr. President, if we're going to allow motions to group items, the assumption is typically that it is by complete consent of everyone, not requiring discussion. So if we're going to have discussion on individual items, do we need to take the items individually? Or are we consenting to agree to these items en masse? Because if not, then this is just a waste of time.
We're just having discussion, that's all we're doing about all the items we put, we made a motion.
Well, then we should take the items individually then, so we're all on the same page.
Unlike before when we just gave blank statements on a platform, right?
I believe at the beginning that he didn't have, he didn't have an agenda and wanted to go one by one so he could know what we were discussing.
Well, I made a motion.
So on item number nine, Mr. Montalvo, is, are you, are you amending the item?
It's up to you, what do you want to do, I'm just saying, ten thousand dollars for a truck seems too much money. If you want to amend the motion, fine, if you don't, you want to remove it, we can remove it. It's whatever you want.
What do you recommend, Mrs. Rolles?
Can I ask who makes the decisions about purchasing of vehicles out of that department?
Our director for maintenance. The directors make the recommendation to our, to the purchasing agent and Ms. Rolles and the purchasing agent actually makes the recommendation to the superintendent and then we present them to the board.
So, you know, are we saying that we trust our directors to know what is and what is not a good value? I'm assuming since they're directors, they probably know all that we're making assumptions about, which is why they have made the recommendation, correct?
I agree, I agree, Dr. B. And the motion was to pass item one through thirteen except item three. We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal, second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Can you still get me the information on the question?
I will, sir.
Mr. Villasquez, I'm going to abstain because I didn't get it in the time, so I'm not, I'm not even sure what I'm voting for. So I'm going to abstain at this time.
Okay. Okay, motion passes. Item number three, consider and take possible action on financial report due date extension waiver. Do we have a motion on item three?
I move to accept this item as presented.
We have a motion by Dr. B, do we have a second?
I second.
Second by Mrs. Lopez, discussion? Can somebody explain?
I just want to explain the item. Districts that have a June thirtieth fiscal year may submit a waiver request in Texas Education Code forty-four to submit their annual financial audit within a hundred and fifty days of the fiscal year end date. The waiver application is just so that we can get an extension on submitting the annual financial report, which is the audit. I am not planning on using this extension. However, given the unprecedented times that we are living right now and the increased cases of COVID that we've, that we have had in our community, I am concerned that for some reason, we will not be able to submit the financial report on time. I am not saying that I am not going to complete the audit by November twenty-seventh. I just want to make sure that we have enough time just in case something happens. I don't see why this should not be approved if the state is giving us this opportunity. And so I, as the chief financial officer of this school district and has been responsible to complete it the audit on time, I am asking all of the board members to please approve this item so that the business office can have ample time and can be working diligently on this, on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rolles. We have a motion by Dr. B, second by Mrs. Lopez, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Section four, under, under authority of the Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one slash five five one slash zero eight four. We're now headed to closed session.
Seven seventeen, sorry.
Okay, it's seven thirty-five and we're now back in open session.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I just want to say something really quickly. I know that we went through the agenda rather quickly, so we didn't get to bring up a few things to the community's attention. I would like to again thank Ms. Garcia, the CFO and her administrative team for presenting a balanced budget. I think that that is a very important notable point. We haven't had a balanced budget in many years and to do it at a time when we are all going through such a horrific financial crisis, I think you deserve praise and stabilizing a school district, which will hopefully help our community to stabilize as well. I also wanted to say that the compensation package that we didn't get to discuss as well, which I think that our staff will be happy with as we are all struggling during these times, the fact that you have taken the time to make sure that they have a little extra added cushion during these difficult times, that you plan to budget for them and still maintain the valid budget is admirable. And I'm also hoping that the teachers will appreciate the stipend program that's been put together by their peers. All in all, to say that we really appreciate the effort that you put forward during this difficult and novel time. And on behalf of myself and I'm sure we all here on the board share that sentiment, we want to say thank you. And I am very proud as a district and as a team that we are trying to come together to make sure that our staff, employees, and children are well taken care of because we are all in this together, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia, for a tremendous job balancing the budget and having this, like Dr. B said, this stipends and all this raised compensation.
Thank you so much.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Villarreal, second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, raise your right hand. Meeting is adjourned, it is seven thirty-seven.